Preparing livestream, the livestream, the meeting it's going.
Oh yeah. Yeah, we just, it just went live.
Okay.
I don't know if I could stop it.
Oh, is it delayed? Alright, so I can click off of this. We could leave it, that's fine.
Alright, so it's just, it's recording us now, technically, so.
So is it still running now?
Yeah.
Yeah, it says custom live streaming on my screen.
Okay. Alright, so as people come in, we'll have to let them in, right Vince?
Yeah, they'll pop up and either one of us could admit them.
Alright.
Let them know we're already live when they come in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so much for six thirty with power.
No, no dice yet?
Nah, that you can see out there, there's like the uh where the fuse is and then there's a red light blinking.
Okay.
Problem is, they got a lot of, they got a lot of uh calls, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sure they're gonna be busy tonight.
Yeah, we supposed to get more too?
Let me check.
I hate these times of the year when this happens.
It's all or none. We're in a drought for a month and now it's gonna rain for.
I know.
Hey Andrew, I'm gonna mute you, see if you can unmute yourself or if you have to request it.
I guess he had to request it. He didn't do it yet, though.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how to request it, but yeah, I see Ray sand.
Uh, there's also, do you get like three dots up at the top of your speaker speaking box?
Yes.
Do you have an option in there for request uh video?
I don't.
Alright, how about now? Actually, I might be able to enable it, has to start video.
There you go.
Alright, now I'm gonna stop your video, see if you, see if you can start it on your own.
Yep, I sure can. Alright, hold on, you can't start your video because the host has stopped it.
Okay. I sent you a uh. There you go.
And who knows, I'm not even sure how many people, we might just have board members on, everybody else looking at YouTube.
Yeah.
I sent out in the uh, in the email that they could use the Google form too, so.
It does look like thunderstorms possible from now until. Looks like it's gonna stop around ten and then start again around midnight.
That could prevent them. I don't have to decide what we do tomorrow, well, we got camps and stuff tomorrow, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, water is running because we're on backup generator, so.
And they have, they have lighting in the gym, I think.
Yeah, they should.
I gotta go down there and look. Where, what about the Y? Where's the Y?
They're usually down by the middle school gym.
Alright.
Yeah, pretty much most of the B wing, I think.
Yeah, they usually take the B wing over.
Kevin just joined my personnel committee meeting. You wanna unmute Diana?
Yeah, I thought I clicked it. She should get a pop up. Diana, you should get a pop up to unmute. She might not be ready to though.
Yeah.
It's been a while.
Yeah, this brings back bad memories, PTSD. Well, there's Brian. He's in the waiting room.
I just let him in.
Oh, there's Kevin.
Just a reminder, everyone has to join, we are already live.
Yes, we are live streaming, everyone.
Sorry about that, I, it wouldn't let me unmute or put my video on.
No worries.
But Gary, I'm sorry.
We are live streaming, everyone, so just be aware of that. Hi. That might be, wonder. Michael Strauss? So we, just reminder, no Tracy, no Jim tonight.
Vince, can we have people add last names?
That would be good. Once they're in, they can't rename themselves.
Vince, you could leave the, everyone on like you had it.
Yeah, I was gonna spotlight uh the board.
The board members?
Yeah.
Oh, great, perfect. I got nervous, I thought you were just gonna put it on me on.
It'll probably default to that, cuz you're presenting the most, but.
I was like, no, you don't need to do that.
Okay, I think I got everybody.
Yeah, just wait, Megan should be coming in.
You have up to nine, so.
Yep.
Thanks Vince, so when I mute myself, it doesn't allow me to then unmute myself?
Yeah, cuz it's, it's a blanket setting for everyone, but I can. If I ask to unmute, then you can unmute, so.
Okay, I don't need to be unmuted.
If you click the three dots at the top right of um. Your window with your face on it. I think you can ask.
Okay. Alright, I'll mute myself now and then I'll ask there, thank you.
Or, or do a hand raise as well, if you want to be unmuted, I'll look out for those.
Alright, it's seven o'clock Ronnie, if we wanna roll, it's up to you if you wanna wait a minute.
It's just waiting to be unmuted, so.
So you're, you're doing the uh, the physical hand wave, I was looking for the uh, the little zoom.
Yeah, well, I hit the button, yeah.
Gotcha.
All good, all good, alright. So, the meeting of the South Hundredan Regional Board of Education is called to order. Adequate notices as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December fifth, twenty twenty-two. By posting the notice with the respective clerks of the City of Lambeville, Bro Stockton and Township of West Amwell. As advertised on December, oh no, eighth. Yeah, eighth, twenty twenty-two, I have an old agenda that I'm reading off of in the Hundredan County Democrat and Trenton Times Newspaper. Everyone will join me for a flag salute?
Yes. United States. United States of America and to the Republic which expands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Mr. Harris.
Okay, roll call Gina Pachetti. I see you, Brian Keys. I see you, Kevin Kowaleski. I see you, Sean Lewis.
He should have just came in.
I just admitted. Do we have Sean?
Yep, he's here.
Okay. Trace Petrucci is absent, Diana Purcell. I see you. Megan Warner. No Megan, okay. Ronnie Todd Marino, I see you, and Jim Gallagher is absent, we have quorum.
Alright.
So then with that, we move to the approval of minutes from our last meeting. I have a motion.
Do we have any, Ronnie, just real quick, I don't know, I know L E F. Um, Janelle reached out to me, she doesn't have an update, I think Diana, do you have an update for uh PTO? Vince, you can just make sure she's unmuted.
Sorry.
Michael Strauss with the hand raised.
Oh, he's here, oh, he's here.
He can, he can take it.
Yeah, Michael Strauss, if you can unmute him, Vince.
Hey everyone, a really quick update for us this evening. Uh, our reorganization meeting is going to be happening in uh early July. And um, the only other thing is we have a few, few things going over the summer with um. The sixth grade fundraising for next year, uh possible car wash in the coming weeks. And um, we will be setting up lemonade stands throughout Lambeville and Stockton, so be on the lookout for them. Uh, hopefully we'll be hitting a lot of tourists in there as well, they were super effective for us last year. And um, hopefully it will continue this year, that's all.
Thanks, Michael. And I don't know, I don't think there's anyone here, is there anyone for PTA? Yeah, I didn't see anybody on the participants. Alright, now we can go to the minutes.
Okay, alright, so with that, um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting? So.
Vince, can we unmute the board members so that way they can uh vote?
Yeah, every, every time they uh re-mute though.
Maybe just, if you can, just not, don't mute at all, if you can, it's probably easier. And I think Megan, I think Megan just joined us as well, Vince.
There's, there's no way to just have the mute board members being able to.
No, we, we changed our subscription after the COVID days, so. We're, we don't have the ability to just, you know, mute some and not others, it's unfortunately.
Uh, just tell Andrew to write a check, we'll get the Cadillac version.
Can you turn on, is Megan on Vince?
Yeah.
Hey, everybody.
Okay.
So it a motion from Diana, did I see a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. And.
All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you, team, okay, motion carries.
Alright, I think I'm up, right?
Yep.
I'm up, alright, so hello everyone, happy summer. Um, we had a great end of the year, great graduation, class of twenty-three, um, the weather was awesome, so. Uh, kudos to everyone and, you know, we've already been several weeks in the summer, it was kinda nice, I will say. Over the last two weeks, when I saw buses moving every morning and we were driving in and we had already been done for a week or two. It's kind of a nice feeling, so uh, happy summer, but here we go, and you know, July is right around the corner. So two areas that I wanna provide updates on for this evening, the first is an update on our strategic plan and the strategic planning process. And then the second is our construction projects update. So just an update as far as where things stand with our strategic plan. Uh, just as a reminder, so we had three strategic planning sessions, you can see those here. Um, and you can kinda see where we focused our attention for each one of our meetings. Uh, we had an awesome turnout, I thought, from the community, you know, in between about forty to fifty participants at each session. Keeping in mind, we rotated the sessions around, we had, you know, our first at the middle school, high school, our second at LPS, and then our last one at West Amwell. The entire process was facilitated by Gwen Thornton from New Jersey School Boards. So she did an awesome job really keeping us on task and, you know, focusing our first evening on our strengths and challenges in the district. And then looking really at our second meeting of our vision and where we wanna be in five years, and then finally, based on that vision. Setting some specific goals and objectives as we work on our five-year plan. So, as I share the, the goals, and there's five, and I'll share some of. What we came up with, um, with goal statements and objectives, so you can kinda see here, this one focused specifically on. The student learning experience within our classroom walls. And some of the areas and objectives that we wanna focus on with our curriculum offerings and our partnerships. Um, and expanding that, our integration of technology, uh, and then also making sure that. Um, as we continue with our cross-grade level and curriculum and, and our small group instruction, which is. Really been an important part of our, our goals, um, you know, and our professional development plans. Each and every year over the last two years with blended and personalized learning, so that will continue. Our second goal was community engagement, so really trying to develop that collaborative relationship and identifying. If there are any barriers with certain student populations and parent populations. You know, looking at different things as far as, you know, service learning. And extracurricular, really like beyond our school wa- walls, career exploration. Um, communications is a big deal, you know, as it always is, especially with our calendars and websites and the platforms and our new student information system. That's coming on, um, fostering our community, we're really on a lot of different events. You know, I think a night at the nest and some really awesome things that we do where the community gets involved and continuing to try to expand upon that. And then obviously advertising and celebrating our student achievements, and we heard that loud and clear. So far, um, with some of the feedback we've gotten with our climate survey, which I'll talk a little bit about. Uh, but really making sure there's a balance between not only athletics, but also all the many um academic achievements that our students receive each year. So a very important one, you know, the health and wellness for both our students and our staff. Um, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about mental health over the last year or so and really focusing on resources. For mental health, it continues to be a focus. Um, you know, scheduling, you know, opportunities to schedule for both students and staff to connect, those relationships are extremely important. And then, you know, really strengthening our existing curriculums is important, and then facilities. A lot of changes that are coming, we're gonna talk about some tonight, but really focusing on what that transition looks like and the utilize. Utilization of our facilities and logistics that will go into that, as far as our transitioning and read, you know, our. Really redefining our configuration for our district, that's gonna take up a lot of time over the next, you know, couple of years, so we wanna make sure that is. Smooth as possible, and we're supporting families and communicating as much as we possibly can, and also preparing our staff for that transition. And then finally, communication, so we spent some time, and this has been an ongoing conversation even beyond our strategic planning process. What is the best way to communicate to our parents, there's so many different means. Uh, that are out there, what is the best way, uh, again. We got some of that feedback as well on our climate survey, and then, you know, as we get into our construction here. How do we get best go about making sure the community is most up to date on what's going on and. All of your dollars at work as far as our construction projects. So these are the big kinda overarching areas, the next step of this is we are gonna kinda farm out each one of these goals. To some of our different board curriculums, the kind, or committees, excuse me, to kinda flesh out. So our curriculum committee is gonna take on the student learning experience. Our school and community committee is gonna take on community engagement and communications. Our personnel committee, health and wellness for our students and staff, and then finally, our financing facilities will take on. Facilities, logistics and the utilization and transition of our facilities. So that's something we intend to work on over the next couple of months, to kinda flesh out these more specifically. With an action plan and then develop um, our full strategic plan to present to the community at some point, hopefully in the fall. Um, so again, I just wanna thank everyone that was involved, we had a ton of input, some great sessions and um. You know, this really truly will be the roadmap for us for the next five years, once it's developed, so. Again, you know, I think it was a very useful process to steer us in the right direction. So that's the first part, the second part of our. My update is our school construction projects, so um, first of all, I really wanna take a minute. To thank um, the LPS staff, Principal Cignones, our maintenance staff, you know, Andrew Harris. There was a lot of planning that went into this, right, six to eight months worth of planning. To eventually get to what you see in these pictures, where by the end of the day on Friday, June ninth, the building was empty. Right, and the only thing that was left was stuff that you're kinda seeing right now, so. To organize all that, to move it all. And all while teaching and doing all the normal things that our staff does was a monumental task. That took a lot of tedious details to actually happen, but it was very important that it did. And everyone did an awesome job maintaining a sense of humor during, you know, a stressful time at the end of the year, and again. We were able to turn everything over, you know, by that Friday and are in really good shape, and speaking of that. We are making great progress at our pre-K four school, so the asbestos abatement started on Monday, June twelfth. And I will tell you that the contractor is ahead of schedule, we originally thought we would be sometime at least after July fourth. To finish with the asbestos abatement, but the target date is actually this Thursday. So you can see just some areas here, uh, where some of the basement, uh, or the abatement took place. With some of the soffit areas that are, you know, on the front of the building, you know, near the main entrance and also near the gym area. Um, and then from there, you can get an idea, this is right in some of our, see some of our classrooms already, where the floors are gone. Um, this one, next one, the gym, so that's the gym on the left, the floor is completely gone. Um, and then on the right, you can see the hallways have, have some protection down, some pretty strong uh floor protection. For some of the renovations that will be taking place, so our contractor, Skizari. Because some of the um, you know, asbestos abatement was completed ahead of time. They started to get in late last week to start some of the demolition. And then they're getting in, you know, a little bit this week as well, and then probably next Monday and. You know, next week's a little tricky cuz we have the July fourth holiday, but they'll be full on as far as, you know. Basically the demolition and really getting things moving, so. Um, you know, I'll continue to send out updates to the community, um, you know. And folks that live in the area to let them know when fencing will start going up and. Obviously, you'll be seeing more, um, you know, folks around the building and they'll be mobilizing and setting up the site. But uh, the good news is we are ahead of schedule, I'm excited, we're in St. John's, the move went well, we're getting settled there. Um, obviously, this is going well and, and we're off to a great start, so, and, and I was really happy too, just to say. You know, obviously in the front of the building, the courtyard, there was a lot of awesome stuff as far as plants and flowers and all kinds of things. And the community did a great job of coming out and taking a lot of those different things, cuz we didn't wanna see them go to waste. So if you haven't been by there lately, pretty much the garden area in the front is almost empty. Um, and I'm really happy that our community was able to, you know, come in, bring a shovel, dig some things out and take them home and plant them, and they went to a good home. Because there was some really nice things that were in that area, so that was, that was a big plus for the project. Alright, so that is for pre-K four, and then the last thing I'll say is, if you want a little bit more information on the asbestos abatement. This gives you some details on exactly what's being abated. Um, by square footage, or when you see LF, it means linear feet. Um, throughout the building, those are areas based on the renovation that we identified that had to be remediated. And then, um, if you look at the top, there is a live link here, if you want some more information about how that abatement process took place. And all the different factors that go into when they do an abatement with air testing and all the quality controls. If you click on that link, it will give you all that information, um, you know, about what the abatement process looked like. Alright, so for the five-eight building, um, unfortunately, we're not, you know, in as a good position as we are for the pre-K four. Um, at this point, construction cannot begin until we basically obtained two permits. The first one is the DRCC permit, the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. So I wanted to make sure everyone was crystal clear on where we are with the process of that. So in order to obtain a DRCC permit, we need a letter from the West Amwell Township Planning Board. Stating that our plan is consistent with the municipality master plan. Um, our project for the five-eight building was first presented to the um. Municipality, the West Amwell Township Planning Board back on July twentieth of two thousand twenty-one. And then upon request, we did it once again on May sixteenth of two thousand twenty-three. The planning board had forty-five days to provide the letter from the date we submitted our review application, which was actually on May second. Two thousand twenty-three, before the May sixteenth meeting. We received a letter from the township on day forty-five at four thirty PM on June sixteenth. Um, unfortunately, in order to make the June twenty-first agenda for DRCC. They needed that letter from the township by June thirteenth, and we missed it by three days. Um, so with that in mind. We, the permit review is on the agenda of the next DRCC meeting on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, you know, we've been told that they have all the information they need and we sit very nicely for an approval. But they have to do it through a meeting, so unfortunately, um, we have to wait until the nineteenth. So that's permit number one. Permit number two is the NJDEP septic approval. So in order to submit our application to the DEP for approval. It has to be reviewed by the West Amwell Township Board of Health. Which meets every other month, so not on a monthly basis, every other month. Um, with that. We submitted the application to the West Amwell Township Board of Health on March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. The application was on the May seventeenth agenda, however, the Board of Health took no action, unfortunately, on the application. We requested a special meeting of the West Amwell Township Board of Health, which was granted and scheduled for June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Unfortunately, we received an email from the municipal clerk on June fifth. Uh, that they did not have a quorum, therefore the meeting was going to be canceled. So the next Board of Health meeting is scheduled for July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We are and have confirmed that we are on the agenda, we will be present for the meeting, we will have everything they need, we've asked them in advance if there's any questions. That they have, so that we can be prepared and provide them with all that information before the meeting. So just a couple of things I, I'll say is, as a result of the permit delays, the date of completion for the building will not be July two thousand twenty-four. Quite honestly, at this point, the completion date is TBD, depending upon when construction starts. Um, and we are actively working with our attorney to do everything in our power to expedite. You know, not only the permit process, which is our first hurdle, but the completion of the project and, and to reduce the negative impact on our students any way we possibly can. So, um, you know. So um, you know, each and every day, this is a major focus of our work. We're trying to do everything we can to move through the process. Uh, but unfortunately we've experienced some delays in the permitting process. So I will continue to, you know, provide updates, you know, as uh, you know, I've said in the past, but just as a reminder. Our website on the homepage, right of our district website under school construction projects. Um, you'll notice if you go there today, I uploaded some uh of the pictures that you saw of the pre K four building on Friday. So I will continue to do that and that's a great place to go. Um, doing the best I can to. Date stamp everything so you can follow in progression exactly what's the most recent. And kind of follow along beyond our board meetings of of updates on our school construction projects. So before we open the public comment, I'll ask the board, is there any updates on anything I shared with strategic plan or our school construction projects? Or any questions?
Tony, I have a question about the strategic plan. What is the date that we are um looking to have that completed by again?
I would say hopefully by the end of the fall. Um, for our committee work, uh, you know, over the next couple of months. Um, to be able to bring something, eventually we'll bring it to the community and for board approval. So that would kind of be the goal.
I just had a comment. I wanted to again, again, um, praise and thank all the uh additional work that the teachers and the administration did and that Andrew did. And um, helping uh. Get the, get the elementary school ready for construction and then also all the additional work trying to. Get everything moving. So really appreciate it and recognize that this was a Herculean task and they did it. Um, hopefully with a smile on their face most of the time.
That's correct. All right. So public comment, we have a couple of different ways. Um, I'm just going to get out of this for a second. Hold on. So we have the Google form, we have. Folks that uh can unmute themselves.
Just raise your hand on Zoom if you'd like to be unmuted.
And we will, you know, continue to use the same policies process that that we use with the.
Remind you want to read from the agenda?
I can certainly do that. Yes. Okay, so. Just a reminder, before we start public comment, we have procedures and requirements that include standards of comment. Conduct that need to be followed by members of the public during public comments. If member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period of public comment, the member of the board charged with running the public meeting. Shall warn the disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during the public meeting. Or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behavior such as, but not necessarily limited to shouting. Interruption and use of profanity are common seen as abusive, obscene or defamatory. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any ma- matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name and municipality. But a comment is now open.
Do we have any hands, Vince?
No.
All right, I'll start out first. Just, we had a, we had a. From the weekend actually from the Google form. So everyone can see this. It was from Anne Webb. Um, who I believe is from West AMO, yes. And here was the question, the rental agreement for the use of St. John's details in section four one. Needed alterations, including removal of a wall, upgrading the kitchen electrical system. And installing an exhaust system in the kitchen. It is written that this is our responsibility and not part of the four hundred and seventy thousand dollar rental fee. Do we have a cost of how much those projects will be? Will that also come out of capital reserve? Also on a different but similar topic in the referendum budget, there isn't a line item. For new fields that will be lost while building the new school softball field, field hockey field. Will the cost of creating space and installing new fields come out of the reserve as well? Is there an estimate on those costs? Um, just a couple of things I'll share. Um, is that a kind of taking piece by piece? So for the kitchen electrical upgrade, we're looking at probably around twelve thousand dollars to do that of everything we need to do. Um, and after, you know, kind of further consideration, we don't need to do anything with installing an exhaust system in the kitchen. So there'll be no cost for that. Um, the twelve thousand for the kitchen electrical will come out of our maintenance account. Um, and that will take care of that. Um, as far as the the walls go, the wall. We're actually doing that in-house with our own maintenance folks. So we don't need to hire a contractor. We'll take care of all that with our own maintenance folks. Um, as far as the fields go. I did want to um, share something. Uh. If everyone can see this, uh, this is a site plan for the five eight site. And you will notice at the bottom right-hand side here, you see where my cursor is. Um, that is a new softball field. So as part of this project. We're losing obviously the varsity existing field, which is kind of over here. And then we're also losing the multipurpose field that's over here. So at the referendum did include a new softball field with, you know, brand new field dugouts, everything that's included with that. Um, we are looking at, which is not included in the referendum, adding a back in here behind the building. Um, another multipurpose field that could be used for like kind of combination uh softball, baseball. And then field hockey, um, maybe middle, middle school field hockey in the fall. Um, that is not part of the referendum. So that is something the board would look at. Through capital budget, you know, a couple of years down the road after we're completed with the project. Um, but it is on our radar and that would in essence replace this field in the corner here. And then obviously the softball field is replaced with a new field right here. All right. Anything else, Vince?
No, I'm not seeing anything.
All right, then we will close this period of public comment. There will be another period later in the meeting. Okay, on to our reports. So building grounds, transportation, finance and safety. Diana.
Um, do we have to do the annual organization or is that part of?
No, those are separate. So we will need a separate motion for the annual organization.
So should we do that now?
I'm looking at, yes, okay. And like I said, I printed out an old agenda. I couldn't get this one to print. So, all right. So, is that something that's separate from buildings and grounds? So. We were looking for a motion to approve the annual organization?
Yes.
I think so, yeah. So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, um. With that, um, what is it the? Do we have any questions on on that? No, okay. So is this something that's a, it's a voice or is it a?
This is a roll call vote.
Okay, all right.
All right, we're, we're ready. Yeah, I will start with Gina Fashetti.
Yes.
Brian Keys.
Yes.
Kevin Kowaleski.
Yes.
Sean Lewis.
Yes.
Diana Purcell.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marino.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. And now we're on buildings and grounds?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. Um, so we did meet on Thursday, this past Thursday, we did discuss um those annual appointments. The organization appointments and contracts that we renew, um, which I hope everyone of course got a chance to look through. Um, on our agenda, there is nine contracts up for approval, including um the lease agreement for St. John's. And so we just have to approve signing that. I'm sorry, approve issuing that. Um, we also talked about and on the agenda is up for approval of transfer of a million dollars from the ARM investment account and. Just a reminder, that's where we invested and are keeping the referendum funds because we're gaining quite a bit of interest. That um we can hopefully use uh towards the projects. Um, as of now, we've gained about seven hundred thousand dollars in interest. So it's definitely, definitely was a wise decision. Um, but we do have to withdraw from that from time to time as um the project starts. So we are approving a withdrawal of a million dollars. To be used for upcoming expenses. Um, then lastly, there is an approval for payment number one to Skazari. And again, that's um first payment towards the. Um, renovation of South Hundred and Regional Elementary School. So with that. I'd like to move items A through N.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Harris.
Uh, starting with Brian Keys.
Yes.
Kevin Kowaleski.
Yes.
Sean Lewis.
Yes.
Dana Purcell.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Gina Fashetti.
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marino.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Stop this personnel.
Yeah, I can take.
Okay, I was going to say, thank you, Tony.
Yeah, I'll take that. Um, before I get to the agenda though, there is one thing and it's related to personnel that I want to mention. Uh, many of you probably are aware that unfortunately uh yesterday and last evening, there was, there was a fire at Heritage Village. Um, so I got a call last night, I don't know, probably about seven, seven thirty. Um, because there was about twenty four residents who needed to be relocated. Um, and they needed a bus. So we made a call to one of our drivers and I want to give her a shout out, Amanda Brown. Literally, you know, seven thirty on a Sunday night. She jumped on it instantaneously, um, picked up her bus and within twenty minutes was there. You know, to take the residents. So I just want to thank her so much for doing that. I know it was a huge help and to. Literally within five minutes of the call, jumping her bus and get down there, um, you know. It was awesome. So thank you publicly Amanda for doing that for us and the, and the residents at Heritage Village. Um, just what we talked about in our meetings really is our current openings. Um, and just started and you can see some of them, you know, being recommended for approval on the agenda this evening. I do want to give a shout out. Unfortunately. Um, it's, it's good for her, bad for us. Amy Hart is retiring. Amy's been a stable in the main office for a long time and. She missed our retirement, you know, on her ease at our May meeting. Because she submitted after the fact, um, she'll be with us to the end of July, but. Amy does an amazing job in our middle school and high school main office and always with a smile. Um, things can get stressful in there between dealing with a lot of different things and. Just an awesome, super nice person. So I just want to thank her for all of her years of service and and wish her. The very best um in her retirement. Um, and then also uh Sue Cathcart, who's been with us. Uh, since two thousand eight, you know, would like to wish her wells in her retirement. Uh, you know, and and the next journey in her life. So and then we have, as you can see, we have a lot of appointments with some of our folks who are coming on. Um, we do have a few folks that are leaving the district. So we have some that are replacing. We also talked about our strategic planning goal that I had mentioned before about health and wellness of the staff. You know, and and kind of next steps of of where we're going to focus on with that. So that's personnel.
Anything to approve?
Just the agenda. Just, you know, it didn't be, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if I can make them, I think.
I can make a motion to approve items A and B.
Yep.
I'll second.
Any questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Harris.
Start with Kevin Kowaleski.
Yes.
Sean Lewis.
Yes.
Diana Purcell.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Gina Fashetti.
Yes.
Brian Keys.
Yes.
And Ronnie Todd Marino.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, for curriculum and technology. Is there anyone who can report on that?
Like, I'll do it. I can take it, Ronnie. So um, you'll see uh two items really. The first one that's on the agenda for approval. Is our two thousand twenty three, twenty four professional development plan. So that is a live link. I suggest folks at home. You can click on that and really take a look at um the areas of focus in the goals that we have for our district goals next year. And there's a breakdown of how we're going to achieve those goals. Uh, we talked about some summer curriculum writing as well. Um, and then we also discussed. Some initial pieces about um our encorese implementation and I'll be talking more about that at our July meeting, but that will be coming and. We'll share more at our July meeting about when parents will be receiving information in August with their accounts and their child's accounts and. How we're going to support that, you know, new, you know, technology system. Um, and then we also have on approval um at each and every year required um to approve. Uh, affirmative action team members and then uh some other things as well. So there's a link there. Um, for our affirmative action team members for the next year. So then we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve A and B. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions on that? Okay, Mr. Harris.
Start with Sean Lewis.
Yes.
Diana Purcell.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Gina Fashetti.
Yes.
Brian Keys.
Yes.
Kevin Kowaleski.
Yes.
And Ronnie Todd Marino.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, for policy.
So it's uh, we didn't meet this month, uh, but we do have policies that are on their second read. That we looked at and examined last month. So you can see them here. The majority of them deal with our business office specifically. Um, and all the things really, a lot of it comes out of the SRA funding and and different federal. Uh, grants and and how we have to account for all that.
Okay, so then in light of that, I will make a motion to approve item A. Can I get a second?
Second.
Questions? Okay, Mr. Harris.
Sure thing. Uh, we'll start with Diana Purcell.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Gina Fashetti.
Yes.
Brian Keys.
Yes.
Kevin Kowaleski.
Yes.
Sean Lewis.
Yes.
And Ronnie Todd Marino.
Yes.
Motion carries.
School and community did not meet this month, so there is no report for that. Um. So then we need to approve the um. The. Harassment, intimidation and bullying report. We don't have to vote on the fire drills, safety drills, but we do have to. Vote on the, on the Hib report. So I will make a motion to approve that report. Can I get a second?
Second.
The voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, now this is the period of the second public comment. We will follow the same procedures that we were described earlier. Then anyone?
Nothing on the Google form, just the one that we already had. I don't see any hands raised, Vince.
No.
Okay, that said, we will.
Ronnie, I think we're good.
Okay, we'll end the second period of public comment. We do have um cause to go into executive session.
Um, and just for board members, I did email out a separate link for exec session Zoom, so you should have got that.
So we will go on that um and only return. We will not take any action.
Correct.
Okay, so can I have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries at seven thirty nine. Vince, just a quick question before I go in exec. Can I close out this meeting and then just reopen it? Can I close out this meeting and then just reopen it?
Um.
Or should I just leave it open?
Are you guys just? Ending the meeting when you come back?
Yeah, yeah, we're just gonna end the meeting, but we're not here in person to end the meeting.
Yeah, we can, we can just stop the stream and end the meeting as far as the live stream is concerned at this point, I believe.
Okay.
But we, that's what we normally do.
All right, so I'm just gonna get out of this. I'll end.